I'd like to call to order the January 19, 2023 Meeting of Mayor and Council. I'd like to call on Councilman Andy Gibbs to lead us in prayer, and then if you'd all remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
Bow your heads, please. Mayor and Mayor, thank you for this evening. Thank you for bringing us all together. The Lord just help us as we come together and make decisions for our community that you guide us and direct our minds, Lord, to make sure that we make the right decisions to move, to move us forward, Lord, as one altogether. Lord, I just ask you to be with all of the council members and the staff and everyone that's heading up to the GMA and the Landlord, keep us safe on the way up and safe travels there, and allow us to be able to bring back a wealth of knowledge, Lord, that we can come back to our community, Lord, and be able to instill it within us, Lord, to move us forward as well. Thank you for everything you do for us, your arms around us, your protection. Amen, I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice.
Before we get to the first item, awards and presentations, I'd like to acknowledge a few people. The ever so lovely Dr. Lucy Green is in the audience. The equally as impressive A.D. Holt. Former city engineer Vaughn Shipman, how are you doing, Vaughn? Heck of an architect Jimmy Cone, how are you doing? Oh, sorry, never mind, Jimmy, I'll talk about you later. You're on the agenda. Gail Green, how are you doing?
I'm good, thank you.
Fantastic. Oh, I got Alvin Payton covered. Alvin, if you wouldn't mind standing, former councilman, Mayor of Old Town, Alvin Payton. Thank you all for taking an interest. Usually we have a bigger crowd than this, but they heard we're going to kind of motor through this agenda tonight. We're all heading up to Atlanta for continuing education and training for the Cities United Summit. We're going to get smarter. We'll share ideas with the other 539 cities and come back with the best ideas that we can possibly borrow for ours as well. All right, we'll start now with awards and presentations. But before we do, when you attend next meeting, no longer will Mark Barber be sitting to my, my right, your left. When you attend next meeting, Richard Hardy will assume that post and that seat as a RM City Manager. And Mark Barber, there's not a person that could say anything tonight. They wouldn't tear up, choke up, or otherwise. So just thank you. And I did. All right, if I could get Dr. David Nelson and his students to join me in front, Valdosta State University professor, Dr. David Nelson, and some of his students. You're needed. An enhanced social media campaign, sustainability for those programs, that's going to be a big benefit to the city. And again, that was the winning group. All right, we'll move on to item three, Valdosta City Council. The council has had time to review the minutes from the January 5th regular meeting. Council, any additions or deletions? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to item four, our lone public hearing, item of the evening, consideration of our request to close a portion of Miramar Street north of Baytree Drive. Ben O'Dowd, our city engineer, to present. Hi, Ben.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This petition was brought to our attention by Bill Kent of Innovate Engineering on December 8th, 2022. This is in relation to the same multifamily residential development that we saw a request for closure in September of 2022. This portion of, or the portion requested for closure is shown on a map after the signed petition. We want to pan to that to talk around. There we go. So the highlighted portion, if you'll remember, to the left of the intersection, that portion of Miramar was the previous portion that was closed as a part of the previous request. This portion is being closed as well, or being requested for closure as well, and this would allow the developer to have more flexibility with how they design their site plan. In accordance with the city ordinance, we required the applicant to obtain signatures from at least 60% of the affected property owners abutting in accessing the portion of the road requested for closure. You can see that application on the previous sheet, signed. We did receive a phone call after this agenda item was submitted from the non-consenting neighbor there, and they did not express any disdain for the closure, but they did ask for additional information. We notified them that there would be a public hearing and the nature of the closure. The request for closure was distributed to all the different departments at the city, utility department, local area utility providers, and their comments are attached if you'd like to read through those. Similarly to the previous closure request, we are recommending approval with the condition that they retain a utility easement, utility and stormwater easement in place of the right-of-way upon closure. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may or may not have.
Council, any questions for Ben? Ben, thank you. Counsel, you do?
Yeah, just one, if it's the council's inclination to grant this request, I would just add that we frame a motion to close the requested portion of Miramar and to convey to the adjoining landowners as provided by law.
I'm going to pass that note down.
I don't know if anybody can read my writing.
All right. Ben, thank you. This is a public hearing item, so is there anybody at this time that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? And please state your name for the record.
My name is Jimmy Cone. My office is located at 1804 Plum Street, and I'm just here on behalf of the owners and the civil engineer was not able to be here, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, if there's any, at this time.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Cone? Jimmy, I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to come forward and speak in opposition of this request? Again, seeing none, I'll turn it over to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, and the city manager, I mean, the city attorney is right, it's going to be difficult to read his handwriting. I'll make a motion.
Muddy your way through.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to follow staff recommendation and request to close this portion of Miramar Street and that we would convey to all adjoining landowners as provided by law.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further comment? All in favor, show of hands? Unanimous, council, thank you. Mr. Cone, thank you. Ben, thank you. He did great, he didn't kick me either. We're moving on to item five, ordinances and resolutions. Item A, consideration of an ordinance for reapportionment of the Valdosta City Council districts. This is first reading, this is also an action item for tonight. Mark Barber, our city manager, will present.
Thank you, Mayor. Every 10 years, most, the majority of local governments in the state of Georgia have to look at redistricting their districts. There are certain deviations from some standards that the reapportionment office looks at in Atlanta. We did, District 3 was one of the districts that was the most out from the deviation. They were short about 1,400 voters when the information from the most recent census was put into their information. So myself, Councilman Carroll, Councilwoman Miller-Cody, Councilwoman Tully, Councilman Gibbs joined us by phone, Deputy City Manager Ammons went to, checked up to Atlanta to the reapportionment office, spent about two and a half hours going through the different variations and choices that we may have to redistrict, so we met all those deviations. The ideal number of voters in every district, I believe, is 9,230, and then the deviations according to race and gender, age and things of that, they take all that into consideration. They make our job much easier, so we don't have to sit here and try to do it on a map. They just move the lines and everything populates for you. So we spent about two and a half hours, we think we did a fair job of doing that. District 6 and District 3, like I said, the majority of District 3's shortage was made up from the north part of District 6, and then District 6 took in the sum of District 4 and sum of 2, so in the end, it all worked out well. We've had this for a while, but the attorneys reviewed it, the reapportionment office has looked at it again, and they're good with it, says that this is a little bit different on a first reading because there is action that needs to be taken at the first reading and the second reading, and we've met all the advertising requirements in our local paper that go along with this. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Mark? Fantastic process to witness, but it was the most frustrating Zoom meeting I've ever been a part of. I couldn't comment, they couldn't hear my voice. I could just sit and listen to all the council's comments.
Yeah, I had to do it through text message. That's right, that's right. But I do want to thank y'all for going up there, I appreciate y'all doing that, and I know that's a long ride up for a short session and a long ride back, but thank y'all.
And we all rode together in a van.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, the tire didn't go completely flat.
That's right.
Until we got back.
It wasn't dry.
That's what I said to you. Without further comment, it is an action item for tonight, so council, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands? Unanimous, council, well done, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Move on to item six, local funding and request. It's a consideration of our request for grant administration and engineering design and oversight for the waterline distribution system improvements associated with our very exciting new water treatment plant number two. Bradley Ayer, Director of Utilities, will present. Bradley, how you doing?
Good, good, thank you, Mayor, Council. Yes, this is a consideration request for grant administration and engineering design for the waterline distribution system improvements associated with the water treatment plant. As you know, the city was awarded a $12 million and $75,000 grant in combined funds. We, the city utilities department has selected term-up seed engineers to administer the grant and to design and oversee the work of the waterline that connects the plant to our system. And they provided us a cost proposal for consulting and design fees estimated at $341,755. We recommend the authorization of this design fee. The design fee is based on a final budget that was submitted to the Office of Planning and Budget, and is based, part of that is based on a percentage of the construction cost, so it's an estimated value as far as the construction cost, so it may vary just slightly from what is shown there. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Counsel, any questions for Bradley? None? Bradley, thank you.
Yep.
Counsel, it's yours for action.
May I make a motion to authorize a design fee of $341,755?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands? Unanimous again, council, thank you. Bradley Ayer, thank you. Move on to item B, consideration of our request to purchase structural firefighting gear for the Valdosta Fire Department's. Chief Bryant Boutwell will present. Chief, how you doing?
Good. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Barber, thank you for your leadership and mentorship. Oh, and the tire was completely flat at the fire station. So we're here requesting permission to move forward with a purchase for structural firefighting gear. Many of you will remember, we set a plan three years ago, and so we buy, we keep this as a line item, and we replace gear each year, and so that we're not hit with one big expense at one time, because it has a 10-year shelf life. Councilman McIntyre, you and I covered that briefly during our meeting, just to kind of show you how we keep it flat, budgetary, you know, as far as the fiscal piece of that, and we don't have a big fluctuation, and doesn't leave us with 100 sets of gear that need to be replaced at one time. So we, I did want to spend a little bit of time to tell you that, or remind you that three years ago, we put this, all of this gear out in the field, and we allowed our people to test it, and when it came back unanimously, it globe passed through test of our personnel. It also passed through the quote process, so we did well with that, and it also has a 10-year warranty, which unfortunately, we've had the opportunity to test that warranty, and they have made good on that. So, but we are a very aggressive and busy department, and so we have tested the gear. Three years later, I just wanted to make sure we're still doing diligence and we're still being fiscally responsible, so even though we're buying this under state contract, and it's been tested, and we're happy with the gear, I just kind of wanted to see where we stand. So reached out, got quotes. This gear, as you already reviewed, is $29,0297 per set, competitor gear, still coming at $3466 a set. So we're still being fiscally responsible and also meeting the needs of our personnel. However, you do recall, we were doing 30 sets, 30 sets, 30 sets, then we're going to step it down to 20. Last year, we stepped it down to 20, we're still doing okay. At 20 sets, we're coming in at $58,059, which is still up under our budget allotted amount, but only getting 20 sets. If we went up to 30, then we would be over that amount. So we're okay, we're asking approval on the 20 sets, we're not asking for more, but I would like to add that I have, and thank you for all that reached out concerning the assistance of firefighter grant, we do apply for that each year. Our 10% match has been let up under what's required for me to come before council, and so it's one of those things that we've been pursuing. I have been successful with some grants, but that one I have not, and so this year's, we're still not discouraged, this year we're doing it again, because as I was telling you, we did 30 sets in 2021, '22, we stepped it down to 20, '23, we stepped it down to 20 again, and so, you know, I'm 40 sets below really where I want to be, and so I'm using that as a cost-benefit analysis when I am proposing this grant funding from the federal government. But to let you know, kind of, our inflation has put us in such a weird situation right now. In 2021, we bought 30 sets at $53,824. This year, we're buying the same gear, 20 sets at $58,059, so you can tell how much, and it's, we're looking at more cost increases starting February 1st, so that's why it's important. Right after the turn of the year, you see me every year coming up here before we meet those cost increases. So I gave you a lot of information, I know, but we're asking that we move forward with the 20 sets of gear, and I did want to reassure you that we are also applying for AFG assistance in both gear, SCBA's, and I completed one today for assistance with a quick response vehicle, but we'll talk about that more later. So, any questions?
So, how many sets do you actually need? I mean, you need 10 more sets, right?
In 2014, we received 67 sets. At that time, you could buy head to toe for $3,000. Right now, and I have some in reserve, I have 30 sets that I would like to replace, 30 sets. That's going to put me in good shape. I'm still okay, so our overall goal is 2 sets of gear per firefighter. 30 sets would put us on track to, again, next year, continue down this process. Again, at 20 sets, we're good, but we have 30 sets that go out 2024.
So you need additional $12,000 to buy 10 more sets.
10 more sets would be $20,000. At 2,000, what was that, 2,000?
29.
29 each.
2902.
For a set.
Well, what I don't want to see us do is get so far behind, and then the costs go up, that we can never get caught back up.
Right.
You understand?
I understand, and so.
Because if the cost rises again in six months, and then we're back here again saying, now we got, now we can only afford 15 sets, we're just backing our, you know what I'm saying, we're backing ourselves in the corner.
Right. So, and that's the balance, 30 sets, we're good, but that's the balance of trying to overload, because then you put yourself in the economic bind when you hit that 10-year mark, which is where we're at, the 2024. That's why three years ago, I started rationing it out, so that I could completely replace all of that gear by the 10-year mark.
We're not on par, we're not on pace for that, are we?
We are behind on replacing all of that gear.
10 sets behind?
We are 10 sets behind.
So if we get back up to 10, we'll be back on pace?
We'll be back on pace.
For the 2024?
For 2024. Now, keep in mind, we're going to order again in 2024, so if we do 20 now in 2024, providing that it's not 180 days out, because I'm running into that as well. Then we will still be on par, even without AFG assistance. So, to sum that up, 30 sets, we're in great shape. 20 sets, we're good. 30 sets desirable, 20 sets.
That's our classification.
It does not. It does not. I'm not going to let us get behind that far, but 2024, we have, we're looking at 2024, 30 sets going out. So with us having to step back the last two years, I mean, at 10 sets puts us there. Now we come back, first part of 2024, we ask for the additional gear, then we're still on par.
Do we have anything, Mark, I mean, I'm just asking, is there any room anywhere in the budget to keep us, to bring us back up for, I mean, 30 grand?
Chief and I have had this discussion, and like you said, he's good, well, not where we exactly want to be, but when you get your budget for, when you begin working in March, you're going to see, we're going to ask for that amount we need at that point in time. So I think we can get by until then, to the next budget. We're good, we're good, but again, just next year, we're going to see it again.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Counsel, any further questions for Chief? Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion, we approve the request brought to us by Chief Boutwell.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further comments other than ketchup? All in favor, show of hands? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Councilman Gibbs.
That was, that was Mr. McIntyre that did it. His first second.
Oh, I was going to tell Mr. McIntyre to forget everything Chief told you, because now, now he does have to buy a lot some as well. All right, real quick, before we move on to item C, I think I've been made aware that there are some leadership lounge class members in attendance, is that true? If there are?
The best class ever.
The class of 2023?
Do I stand too?
You do have to stand too. Fresh off the retreat weekend, and I can't believe they made it here today.
It's so good to see the young people getting involved like this.
Well, most young people.
I'm young at heart.
Best of luck with your class year, it's going to be very rewarding. Item C, consideration of our request to approve an executive search firm for the search and selection of a new city manager for the city of Valdosta. Believe it or not, Mark Barber, city manager, will present.
Thank you, Mayor. If you recall, last council meeting, a lot of discussion had taken place concerning a recruitment firm for the next permanent city manager for the city of Valdosta, and we had three companies that the Georgia Municipal Association had given us that they had dealt with and they felt would, they pretty much serve local government, and there's definitely an advantage to that. So Deputy City Manager Ammons obtained quotes from the three that we spoke of last meeting, and they're in your packets. Slaven Management Consultants gave a quote of not to exceed of $24,280.75. Mercer Group and Associates out of Athens gave a quote not to exceed $21,500. And Cole and Basinger and Associates of Daytona Beach, they put a straight bid in of $34,500. of $34,500. So, uh, those, that's what we found out about each of those companies. And, uh, we had, we had a lot of material in your notebook to look at, I know that each of them sent, so, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel. Mark, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the Mercer Group and Associates.
Action.
Have a motion and a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. It's unanimous, the search has begun. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, counsel. We'll now move on to Item Seven, the citizens to be heard portion of the, the meeting. We ask that you come forward and state your name and address, so that we can have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes, so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to counsel as a whole, do not attempt to engage individual members in debate. It's our policy to follow through with you and your concern, if not immediately, shortly thereafter. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson, again, to ensure that others have time to be heard. Having said that, having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard?
Yes, Mayor. Alvin Payton Jr., 3211 Timber Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. And I'm primarily here just to thank, uh, your mayor, Mark Barber, for being the manager that he has been for the city. But to go back to our relationship of 12 years when I was on council, and I'll never forget the opportunity you did with me, and you and I walked about an hour and a half on Forest Street in about 9-degree weather, just to make sure the leaves wouldn't fall on Forest Street. And, uh, but I just came to say thank you for your service, and I'm glad I'm here at your last meeting. Wish you nothing but continued success. Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Are there any other citizens to be heard at this time? Remember, there's a three-minute time limit.
I can talk fast.
Vaughn Shipman, uh, 3312 Britton Drive, here in town. First, I thank you, I found out today, as you may recall, I came before the city asking about a couple of traffic safety improvement projects on perimeter road, but I found out today, uh, that those projects are in the process of being, um, let at some point, you know, at some point, we don't know, but I'd like to encourage the council to put as much pressure as possible on the DOT, through whatever means possible, to get those pedestrian crosswalks in before, you know, something, uh, happens. Uh, there's a lot of development in the area of perimeter road and Brookfield and Lake Laurie, and of course, Bemis Road speaks for itself. Uh, great staff in the engineering department, I just want to tell you thank you for, for having good customer service. The other thing I want to thank you for is, uh, is to let, uh, you know that I think the world of Mark, uh, when I was city engineer in Thomasville in 1996, he came over, he left Thomas, uh, left Valdosta to come to Thomasville, be the financial director after, uh, to straighten things out, let me just say that. And when, um, I decided to, uh, consider coming over here, I asked him if it was a good place to come work, and he told me I would love Valdosta and love city manager and love the council, and, and I did. And, uh, so I just wanted to thank you, Mark, I thank the world of you, uh, when I worked with you elbow to elbow, you're a great customer service person, citizen, and administrator, so thank you very much.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the city manager for his final city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will be brief, because I know we, you guys need to get up to Atlanta safely. Um, all I can, I'll start by saying wow, that I can't believe this day is here. Uh, I, I told Ms. Lucy a while ago, when I came in, that I realized today, I've spent more than half of my life in this building, different floors, different offices. I started when I was 26 years old here at the city of Valdosta, and it has been wonderful. It has, um, it, it, I just really can't describe it, and, and, you know, five years ago, when you guys named me city manager, definitely the highlight of my career, and it's been such an honor and a privilege to start in that capacity. Uh, I'm such a cheerleader for this community, it is a wonderful community, there's so many wonderful, good things happening here. And I hope I've been a part of that and have progressed that along, uh, you know, because I want one day to run my grandkids around and say, hey, granddaddy did a little bit of this, a little bit of that, or let me tell you a story. And, um, so I hope I've been a part of that. It has been a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for me and my family, uh, in Valdosta. Uh, you know, I think there's an old, I think his name's going to be Tony Bennett, you know, he left his heart San Francisco, but I'm leaving my heart right in Valdosta, Georgia, and it will always, it, it will always be here. Um, so Mayor, counsel, thank you always for the support that you've shown me, and anything I brought to you, new ideas, whatever it is, you guys have supported that. And, and it's, it's just, I'm very, I'm very appreciative of that, and you all have my utmost respect forever. Uh, to my friends back there in the back, the hardest part of this departure is going to be leaving my friends back there. They are wonderfully talented group of people, and it's just not those folks down there, it's from the top to the bottom here, we've got wonderful, wonderful employees, and, uh, you know, I mean, I call them my coworkers and my family, we've worked hard to create a family atmosphere, and, uh, that's going to be the hardest part, but y'all are left in wonderful hands, nothing but best wishes from my good friend, Richard Hardy, it's very proud, very proud for him. And, uh, thank you guys so much for everything, I appreciate it.
Item Nine, counsel comments, I'll, I'll lead off by saying, he's all I've ever known. I had heard about a guy named Hanson before, but I, I only knew Mark Barber as our city manager. He's the only one that ever pushed a project to fruition, he's the only one that I knew to, to go to, um, time and time and time and time again. Good news is, I still go up every Wednesday to Adel to broadcast, he can't get away from me. So, so I've invited him in up there to talk nice about his, his new city as well, as he just did, Mark, so thank, thank you. Counsel?
Mayor, uh, Mark, um, of course, we've been together now, going on 16 years, yeah, yeah. And we haven't killed each other yet. Even though there's been a couple of times, he's probably wanted to strangle me. One time, probably real recently, he wanted to strangle me. But, um, it has, you know, we've done a lot of good work together, um, I like your leadership, uh, you, you've just really, you stepped into that position, and when you think about who you were coming in on the heels of, um, you just did an amazing job. I mean, you know, coming in behind Larry Hanson was not an easy task. And you have just done such a super job, and, uh, I can, I can say that I'm going to miss you, and, but I am still going to kick your butt if you come back and steal any of these people up to Adel. So y'all know. But, thank you, sir.
Counsel? I know we.
No, no, no. No, we going by age, or we going by what?
Children, children, y'all behave yourselves.
I, uh, first met Mark when he was Coach Mark. Um, my kids, T-Bat team, and, um, put yourself out there at the club of die, and, um, you get a pat on the back, and you get some splashes in the face, figure it's good. Um, Mark's putting himself out there a lot with those girls, T-Bat team, and sometimes they land the bases, clock-wise instead of count clock-wise, you know? And Mark was very patient, he was a teacher, he was a leader of those kids, and my girls haven't forgotten that, they still have some trophies, they're married now. Then I came to council, Mark was in finance, leading, charged, a tremendous job, an outstanding job, and then, as, as already been said, a ride in line, um, as city manager, couldn't have been in a better position for you, an outstanding leader, we appreciate it greatly. You've done wonderful things for Valdosta, I know you will for your future, we wish you all the best, appreciate your honor.
Mr. Barber, I've always called you Mr. Barber, and you kept telling me, no, I'll say Mark, but I kept saying Mr. Barber. Uh, you and I were almost, well, I was brand new in council, and you came in almost brand new after I got elected, so you kind of nurtured me to be what I am in the city of Valdosta. As servant, as Councilman Vickers said, the city of Valdosta slash District One, you have allowed me to come in your office, and, uh, a lot of people don't know this, I could scream, I could, I left, I could cry, and you let that stayed inside the office. And that's what you call a leader, that you don't go out and, and, and negotiate that person, uh, belittle that person for coming in there. Sometime I was out of order, sometime I was in order, but you always stay professional. I knew when you had got enough of me, because there was a certain look you would give me, and, uh, that's, that's another part of being a leader. So as everyone has said, I want to say thank you, and I also know that you were a great baseball leader, because every Sunday you passed from my house, and you, you blew, it was cockwork, that I knew you was going to, to coach the kids in the, at the Bolleton Park. And for that, I say thank you, because you always kept everything in order at Bolleton Park when you were there. So as being a city council person, I just want to say thank you. You're not very far from us, and we still have your cell number, and you made a mistake and let me know where you live, so, uh, we will always say thank you, and we appreciate you, and we adore you, and we know you're going to do great things for Adel. We're going to miss you here. But sometime God do things for a reason. So for that, we just want to say thank you for the service you've done for the city of Valdosta.
Mark?
Um, five years ago, I was elected to council, and my, probably my first biggest, I guess, decision to make was hiring you as our city manager, and it was definitely a, a great decision. Um, thank you for your mentorship in my early, early years of being a council, um, you know, walking me through things, showing me the ropes, making sure that, um, I understood how things work, and how things need to work, and how it works for all the folks of Valdosta, and not just certain districts or my district in general, and how things are done, and, uh, you had a lot of patience. Um, City Adel is getting a great, a great, not just a city manager, but a great man. And, um, I want to thank you for that, I want to thank you for your leadership, and thank you for all you do for us.
Well, Mark, I know I just got up here, but, um, I've been fortunate enough to work with Mark over the, over the last few years. I'd walk into his office, have, with many meetings, uh, with my list of demands, and Mark would nod and smile and didn't tell me no.
And in behalf of the late Councilman Sonny Vickers, we all go to stand and applaud you.
She's channeling him right now.
He was a man that led you.
Counsel's motion to adjourn.
Are you going to Adel? I mean, not Adel, Atlanta.